Welcome.
How are you?
I'm good.
Have you got CPR on you?
No.
Well, just have to wait. Here you want to go down the building. I'm sorry. I'm trying to get to... Are you doing anything? I've got... I've got this one there. I have that. I'm sorry. I like it. You're not supposed to do that on me.
No, it's nothing.
Let's get an order please. I'd like to welcome everybody to the June 16th, 2014 meeting of the County Commission. Calm over.
Peter Edgerton.
Here.
Lynn Campbell.
Here.
Lawrence Ollie.
Nancy Brown.
Here.
Doyle Street. Richard Twens.
Here.
Ronnie Trebin.
Here.
Eric Sees.
At present.
Charles Hongman.
Present.
Elsie Tadzger. Steve Larran.
Present.
Al Valverde.
Here.
Joy Michael Chee.
Present.
Charlie Baynes.
Here.
Deeds.
Present.
In Arum.
Here.
Here.
John Lewis.
Here.
Sonia Puck.
Present.
Justin Cott.
Here.
Scott Sam.
Here.
Bill Armstrong.
Here.
Matthew.
Present.
Robert Goss.
Here.
You do have the corn. We'll have an open drive at the county.
Really, we've all got a bowhead here today. Lord, thank you for your mercy and grace, God, that you have upon each one of us. Lord, we do pray, God, tonight, Lord, for each and every one that's in this meeting, Lord, that you give us the wisdom and knowledge, Lord, that we need, Lord, to guide this county, Lord. And, Lord, tonight, we do give you the honor of praise for everything that you've done for us, Lord. We could never praise you enough, God, for what you've done for each one of us. God, tonight, we do pray, Lord, for those, Lord, who are unfortunate to be here with us tonight, Lord, maybe for secrets, God, we pray, Lord, that you have your hands upon them. The Lords will go into this meeting, we'll pray that you have your will in your way. God, we ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Anthony. Plea.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'd like to recognize the director and appointed officials. There he is. Stand in place. Director and appointed official. Now, I'd like to recognize two more folks here. And this is not on the agenda, but I hope you're glad with me. Tonight happens to be the 38th anniversary of Peggy and John Lewis. I share all the credit goes to Mrs. Wilson. I'd like to hear it. Congratulations. And bless your heart. All right, now we go into our public comments section of the rest of the class agenda. Does anybody have any public comments? Mr. Levis. As you know, Mr. Levis, you have two minutes to speak about anything that's on your agenda.
I'm pretty sure this will probably be on the agenda tonight, quarter. Ladies and gentlemen, tomorrow night, 5:15. We're going to have a budget meeting here. And it's going to be very important. You never wanted it. Because it's a good possibility, you're only going to set the paycheck. And it's a good possibility that you're going to get a project similar to what you've had in the jail times in the past. And by the time you come and listen to this and pay attention, you can get it firsthand if not get here today. So, that's what I want to let you know. Tomorrow night at 5:15, each and every one of you should be here, because we're coming out trying to look at the paycheck. If they say it tomorrow night, you'll have it firsthand. You don't have to ask. Thank you very much.
Mr. Levis, is there any other public comments? Mr. Ward.
I just take this opportunity and thank each and every one of you for the job that you do. And basically, I guess, just doing the research. Fifteen cents is, on $100,000, equates to $38 a year. And I just ask you to consider that in the future as you're making plans and as you're thinking about education and trying to further education for the children of Clark County.
Thank you. Any other public comments? So you know, we'll move on. We have a presentation by Mr. Phil Rat. Mr. Rat.
Hi. Thank you for letting me show up to speak for a moment tonight. I'm just here to try to get a resolution. The animal shelter was built in on top of a pre-existing business. We have a campground. A campground that was put in there, I think, in 2008. And the county city knowingly put in an animal shelter right on top of the campground, which basically is equivalent of putting a methadone clinic inside a daycare center. Parents who are going to come here and refer children to the daycare center. So, did the same thing. You've got an animal shelter, you've got campers that are trying to enjoy the outdoor experience on the top of Lake... Dog River. And that's pretty hard to do now. We have campers that are wanting to... Bark and noise. So I've been to the Animal Shelter Board Meeting since February and trying to get some sort of resolution on a sound barrier, something to reduce the noise. And I still can't get Mayor Humphrey to believe there's a problem. He doesn't appear. Anyone rational, you know, have you ever been to an animal shelter? If you have, you know the sounds that are emitted from it. So I'm just here to try to get something done. We actually had this on the TV program on the news, an interview, where my nephew was being interviewed during the whole time he was there. It was about hour and a half, the dogs were barking. The reporter stated so on DVD. And I gave that to Keith to look at. And everyone else can hear it, but I can't understand why Mr. Humphrey can and why we can't get something done. You're basically going to put a small business out of business. So you go from a revenue-creating, pay taxes, generate tourism traffic for the city, the county. Whereas an animal shelter, which is a drain on the funds. Right now, they're planning to have trucks put in, do landscaping, and they're telling us they don't have the money to afford the sound barrier. So I think that we could get the... Put off some of these other things that we're running and get through to the business of being in the neighborhood of the shelter. I actually have the DVD if you'd like to hear it. Play. Actually, I think my expert just got here. So we have that. We have an iPad where we've taken decibel readings of the background noise. So I think we've got like a three-hour loop. Decibel readings were up to the 65/70 level, which is the equivalent of a hairdryer, a powerful hairdryer. So there's plenty of sound. Then one of the campers came to the last Animal Shelter Board Meeting and stated that it was... It didn't hurt his ears, but it hurt his sensibilities. Basically, he went down there for the peace and quiet, and that has been taken away. And I think we could do something to remedy that. Maybe not totally, but it would be worthwhile to make an effort to do something. Little technical difficulty. So we have plenty of evidence from the campers calling Mr. Humphrey's office, making complaints. This interview, which hopefully we'll have here shortly. I've done something to file it up. There we go. So we've gone since February to the meetings and have gone back and forth trying to get something done. And it appears that they've just taken the option that there isn't a problem. They can't hear it, can't see it, don't wish to address it. Which, if you go over there on any day and stay for long enough, you will hear it. On the day that we had already, Carla came over and for the whole, around three hours she was there, they barked and barked. Didn't have to do a thing. An animal comes, barks, sets them off, that kind of thing. We didn't have to do anything for this. So that played approximately five times in different forms and fashions as far as the length of it. And I think it was a evening, night, actually, five o'clock, six o'clock, eleven o'clock, the next morning, and another mention at noon. And let me ask you, did you guys hear dogs barking while I was being interviewed?
Difficult to hear.
Sure. We couldn't get the volume any better than that. But that's 70 decibels. So basically, think of your hairdryer when you're dark on. And if you've got a pretty deep one, that's what the noise level, it's not hairdryer, but it's barking up to that volume over to where the campground is from the shelter. Turning it 90 degrees had no effect. It would be the same as having a boombox here and then turning it here. If it's 70 decibels, it's 70 decibels. I actually went sitting right down there on it. Ten animals facing campground, ten to the back and ten to the other side. Just common sense, you know that there's a noise problem. And how do you...
Mr. Rat.
Yes.
Can I ask you how much money your campground generates a year?
About 23.
And you... And you... And how much do you pay for taxes?
Don't know off the top of my head. I know that number is getting ready to not double, but it was originally laid out to have approximately eight sites. And we have the ones that are parallel to the river up and operating. Well, there's another road perpendicular to the river that is almost ready. So I would expect that to approximately double.
I... As being a dog owner myself and having neighbors that have dogs and living in the county, I know it can be a problem.
Yes, sir.
It can be a problem for people that have worked the next...
That's right.
I can't get a good idea of what is going on at the moment. I heard on that route. Because here... I would think that the best thing to do would be for each commissioner to have a responsibility to go to visit that... To visit that campground during the next... Before the next meeting and just see for themselves. I don't... I can't get a good idea. Mr. Barrows, you listed... What... You have?
The only way I would think to get a true gauge would be to get the equipment necessary to measure the sound over a period of time. Obviously, for this tape, there's a problem with some periods. The mayor and I made a trip down one morning and it was... There was nothing that day. Obviously, it was that tape that's bad the other time. So I don't know... I don't think any of us can know from one or two trips what the answer is. I would imagine there's equipment necessary and others measures these things. I think the county planner, I see him on the back, may know a little bit more about than I do even. But that might be a way to go if we actually determine what we have.
We actually have a reading of that here on an iPad that shows you either the barking level, the decimals raising up as a bar graph, or over a period of time, and the decimal levels to the left. So I actually have that.
Ms. Brad.
Have you been... Did you complain any during the time that they...
My brother went. He and one of the campers went and talked to him, tried to get him not to build there. And then there was a... There was talk about putting up a 10-foot-high burn dirt walk that we're not so sure it would do it, but we have sent in some information from sound companies that build product that basically you put on a fence and it cancels the sound through it. So we've sent that through.
Did you go to the city maintenance?
No, I have not.
You haven't contacted the city on their part of it?
Right now, to my knowledge, that's city property. So actually, under the city rules, there is a noise ordinance.
But you haven't gone to the city to talk to them yet?
No. Well, it's run by the county, the city-county venture and Animal Shelter Planning, where we're supposed to have rights over it.
Mr. Rat, do you have any activity going on in your park that would precipitate these dogs barking? Such as loud, loud music, VHS?
Absolutely not.
Mr. Art.
Mr. Rat, I heard that interview.
Good, thank you.
On TV.
Yes, sir.
And the commentator said, "I'm standing right here." And he said, "I have no problem hearing the dogs." I mean, you could hear it very well. And my hearing was not 100%, but I didn't have a problem listening to the dogs.
Well, I think she stated the whole time she was there that she heard the dogs barking. When we came in, met for the interview, it started, or I don't know what may be going on, but it was a full, approximately three hours worth of... Pretty much continuous. The decimal levels will change, but there are probably 15 dogs back there. There are these things set up. One dog seeing another one barking, one dog barks, one dog whines. People coming through to make the adoptions, hopefully, they come through. When I went in, they absolutely fired up to high heaven when I went through it, just to look at the shelter and take a peek at it and see how everything's set up. But it's quite different. April from the shelter, I'll tell you that, they're actually looking at some way of preventing all the sound from coming in on their office.
Mr. Cap.
You're telling me that the traffic, noise of the traffic, noise of the water, the problem of the hollering at night, all this stuff bother any day?
I'm sorry, repeat that. I don't know if I understood what you said.
You're saying that these dogs are causing the barking and all these things. The problem of hollering in that area is the river roaring. Is there traffic down that way? I mean, I've heard many times, and I've heard a river roaring, and I've also heard traffic coming through there too.
Right.
You know, and I live probably a mile and a half before a guy asks 22 to come down. And I don't care what you put up there and what you want to do, you're not going to stop a dog from barking. And I live next to about 22 of them. And I sleep like a baby every night. And I come to work every morning.
You're not in a campground expecting peace and quiet?
I've got my window up and I know what goes on.
Okay. The same thing, you're not at a campground paying to be there for the quiet serenity of...
What's your solution to stopping these dogs from barking?
I think looking into that...
But most of them, like that, is going to take around them. What do you want to do?
Not at all. It's ludicrous. Actually, what I would do would be try to look into the company that builds the sound barrier. It's just the material.
It won't suck.
I'm not looking for a solution. I don't think we can have one from this, but one or two things could be done to greatly, dramatically reduce that level of noise. If you really want to dive into it that far, where was the wisdom of opening a campground? Or, I'm sorry, opening an animal shelter beside campground when it was put there? Campground had been there before, so you're looking at a pre-existing, ongoing concern.
Why didn't somebody complain before the bit?
We just answered that. They did.
Before it was ever built?
Correct. They wrote, there's some that are actually on the interview. You heard them say they wrote into the building 90 degrees and put up some trees, which are zany saplings, not as big as me, and a lot of them are dying out, which is, I would say, zero effective. But that was actually done. And supposedly, there were things done at the building of the shelter before it was ever planted in the ground that was supposedly going to offset that. Anyone knows, if you've been to a shelter, and hopefully you have been, walk in there and see what happens, see what you hear. This is ours.
Mr. Rat.
Mr. Rat, how far in advance do you know that this animal shelter is going to be built there? And if so, did you approach the animal members of the board and talk to them about the possibility of noise?
My brother did before he died. That's correct. I've stated that, and we have one of the campers that was with him that can testify to that. So yes, the answer is absolutely yes.
I don't think Mr. Rat is trying for any of us to come up with a way to stop a dog from barking. I think he's just here to alleviate some of the noise that dogs that are barking are causing and disturbing the camp. I don't know if maybe the Health and Welfare Committee would like to look into this. You're welcome. But our each one of us would like to go there individually to see what kind of noise it did cause, but come back next month. Yes, Mr. Art?
We create a problem, and I think it's our obligation to eliminate all that we can. But more, all we need to do is run out some more small businesses in this county. And I think the mayor is the prime example of this right now, when he says that he never heard of the dogs. I agree, don't overtell it. But I think that we need to do something to help this small business, and it's not just this small business, it'll be another one next week, and it'll be another one next month.
I'm sure that if we looked into it and it was investigated, we could find something that would help. Some type of sound barrier. I'm sure it's going to cost some effort, but it needs to be invested. Those are very effective. I work over at Exit 7 in Bristol, when they put those up around the neighborhoods that Order 81 going through. From five to seven, they have those type things erected, and they are exceptionally good at stopping the noise from coming through from the 18-weekers and rushing traffic heading up and down 81. But I'm really trying to stop the noise for our campers and trying to stop the animal shelter from putting a small business out of business. That's what it's all about.
More questions for Ms. Rat?
The only thing I think of is, when you go over, if you've been there for five minutes and you didn't hear anything, that's great, but try being there for a day and sleeping through the night, and you'll hear what's happening. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Now, we'll have the acceptance of our minutes from our previous meeting. I have a motion of Mr. Willis taken by Mr. Chambers to accept the minutes. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I oppose.
I'll vote, if you care. Now we'll have our no reason bombs.
Donald Crowe, Roderick Sutherland, Amy Ressens, Colonel O'Burke, Richard Woodby, Allison Iverson, Sandra Davis, Shirley, Shirley and Fanta, Anthony A. Hughes, Gail and Newman, Michelle L. Jackson, O. C. Stae, Mary C. Combs, Jackie Campbell, Gary Arhod, Thoreau Tris, and A. T. Hines.
Motion to accept.
Sir.
To make a move.
I made.
Motion by Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Arne to accept. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I'll vote, if you care. Now we'll have the election of judicial commissioners. There was several unforeseen health problems and medical problems of Mr. Winters, he was unable to fulfill his duties, and he'll find a doctor of his resignation in your path. Michael Pritchard has submitted his application, having married, and also had a application turned in today by Mr. J. D. Anderson. For the open nominations.
I nominate Nathan Pritchard.
I, sir.
A motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Arne for Mr. Pritchard.
I nominate Anderson.
We have a nomination from Ms. Brown and Mr. Anderson.
Questions, that will be on now, Mr. Williams, the second.
Well, actually, you'll be the second on this nomination.
What was the deadline on the application?
The deadline was June 10th at four thirty P.M.
That was advertised?
Ma'am?
That was advertised?
Yes, ma'am, it was advertised on the sixth day of June.
Thank you.
Ms. Blanchard.
Can that not be, motions cannot be made from the floor, reset.
Actually, we looked into this enough, they can, I guess.
I've always taken the position, and we don't have a set rule on this, we do have deadlines listed, and I think that should, obviously, can be something that plays in your mind as a vote, but I think we've always allowed another additional nomination to the floor just to give anyone an opportunity, and we maybe need to get a rule in place on it, but through the years, we have allowed it, and I think that would be consistent with what we've done as a commission in the past, ma'am.
Mr. John.
Mr. Pritchard here to deny.
Yes, he is, he's here, and in just a minute, I'll ask him if you'd like to say thank you for his thanks. Any other discussion? Mr. Pritchard, would you like to say anything?
Well, I appreciate everybody letting me come and be here anyway, and most everybody here knows me, most everybody, so that's good, and like I said, I appreciate you taking the time to hear me talk, and I'll think now, like I said, I just know I just need to be fair with everybody, show my respect as far as with the job, and as far as just give proper calls as far as from the officers and everything else, and just make it seem rather important, and like I said, work with all of them, the sheriff, officer, and everything else to do whatever I can to help. Well, like I said, I want to say.
Thank you, Mr. Pritchard. Is Mr. Anderson here? Okay, now, I've got to hit myself, I need to, a motion for the nomination cease.
Hello.
Motion for Ms. Taylor, seconded by Mr. Arne, the nomination cease. Now, we'll have our election when the role was called, either answer with Anderson or Pritchard.
Peter Peters.
Pritchard.
Willie Campbell.
Pritchard.
Art Todd, Nancy Brown.
Anderson.
Joel Street.
Pritchard.
Richard Winters.
Pritchard.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Pritchard.
Harry Sees.
Pritchard.
Charles Buckcannon.
Anderson.
Elsie Testor.
Anderson.
Stephen Ratz.
Pritchard.
Al Bowers.
Pritchard.
Joan Lincolnship.
Pritchard.
Charlie Bayless.
Pritchard.
Dee Deeds.
Pritchard.
Ian Arne.
Pritchard.
Steve Chambers.
Pritchard.
John Lewis.
Pritchard.
Sonia Coler.
Pritchard.
Russell Kye.
Pritchard.
Scott Sands.
Pritchard.
Bill Armstrong.
Pritchard.
Cat Ead.
Pritchard.
Robert Goff.
Pritchard.
Twenty ayes for Pritchard. Mr. Pritchard, congratulations, you're going next to judicial commission, you can see this, Guiche, Larry, and Reese Warren. We have two resolutions in your pack. First resolution to be the honor service of Mr. Kent Williams in state based.
Resolution to honor men representing Kent Williams for honorable and astute service to citizens of Carter County, Tennessee, and a member and former speaker of the Tennessee House of Representatives. Whereas is appropriate that members of this body should honor its citizens who selflessly, public, selfless public service has not been, not only reflective of the community in which they live, but the entire state, and represent Kent Williams as one of those citizens, and whereas Representative Williams has distinguished himself as a public spirited citizen of highest order, has an exceptional asset to the good people of the fourth house district, who in events that affirm belief in his abilities as legislator, by electing him to serve four consecutive terms as a representative, a position in which they performed admirably, and whereas Representative Williams has served as a member of the hundred and fifth through the hundred and eighth Tennessee general assemblies, and is respected by his fellow members as a dedicated and well-informed legislator who always cast his vote with conscience, and whereas Representative Williams served with distinction as to speak for the House for the hundred and sixth general assembly, and was a member of the joint legislative services committee and the joint diabetes prevention committee during that same period, and whereas Representative Williams has performed his duties to the utmost integrity and the efforts during his time in office, has been dedicated providing to thorough, thoughtful, and exemplary services to his district and his constituents, and whereas Representative Williams has honorably served constituency and legislative body with distinction and dignity throughout his tenure as representative of the fourth house district of the great state of Tennessee, and whereas Representative Williams currently renders sterling service as a member of the House Business Utilities Committee and the House State Government Committee, and is an active and dynamic participant in the legislative process within these committees, and whereas Representative Williams is a highly influential figure in the political, social, and civic laws of Carter County and the fourth house district, and he serves his constituents in numerous capacities, always working diligently as his elected duties and expending the necessary effort to understand the opposing sides of complex issues, and whereas Representative Williams is a gentleman who truly appreciates the responsibilities as well as the privileges of leadership and citizenship, he donates his time and energies on the local level as a member of Elizabethan Carter County Chamber of Commerce, Elizabethan Carter County Hunting and Fishing Club, and the National Rifle Association, and he served as chair of the United Way Campaign in two thousand and eight, and whereas throughout Representative Williams' outstanding career as a public servant, he has worked tirelessly on behalf of his constituents, bringing to his office an honorable bearing and traditional values of hard work and common sense, and whereas Representative Williams is a retired restaurant owner and businessman, who is a family man, farmer, and community leader, and is proven that citizens can make a difference by being involved in community service and leading by example, and whereas Representative Williams, many civic and public accomplishments aside, is most appreciative of the love and companionship he shares with his dear wife Gail, his sons David, Mark, Roby, and John, and whereas Representative Williams is wholly committed to the noble pursuits of the public service that have earned the Tennessee recognition as a volunteer state, and he should be especially recognized for his exemplary tenure in the Tennessee House of Representatives. Now therefore be it resolved by Carter County Commission, or the Commission of Carter County, Tennessee, in a regular session in Elizabethan Tennessee on this the nineteenth day of May two thousand, change, sixteen day of June two thousand and fourteen, with the lawful form of state commission being present, majority of state commission voting affirmative, that we honor Representative Williams for his notorious service to Carter County, Tennessee, and the great state of Tennessee as a member of the Tennessee House of Representatives, and speaker of the Tennessee House of Representatives, and committed for his countless contributions and many works and service to citizens of Carter County for the fourth house district, and extend his best wishes for continued success and happiness. Mr. Chair.
I have a motion.
I made the motion, sir.
Motion by Mr. Lawrence, seconded by Mr. Arne to accept. Any discussion? I'll vote.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Art Todd.
Nancy Brown.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Aye.
Harry Sees.
Aye.
Charles Buckcannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Stephen Ratz.
Aye.
Al Bowers.
Aye.
Joan Lincolnship.
Aye.
Charlie Bayless.
Aye.
Al Deeds.
Aye.
Ian Arne.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Coler.
Aye.
Russell Kye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Cat Ead.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
Does anyone want to change their vote?
I'll change my vote to no.
Twenty ayes, motion carries. Now, if you have a second resolution recognizing volunteerism efforts in Carter County, and especially the volunteer fire department.
Resolution recognizing honoring volunteerism efforts of individuals who serve their community in many volunteer fire departments throughout Carter County, whereas volunteerism is a basic ingredient, the foundation of this country, and volunteers are essential to our future as a caring and productive county, state, and nation, and whereas Carter County and its citizens truly embody the spirit of volunteerism that initially led Tennessee being aptly nicknamed Volunteer State, and whereas volunteerism serves to strengthen communities, help remedy social problems, provide for common good, and enhance overall quality of life for all citizens, especially those who are without assistance and in a time of need, and whereas perhaps there are no finer examples of the spirit of volunteerism than the dedicated men and women who serve in many fine volunteer fire departments throughout Carter County, and whereas volunteer firemen and firefighters play a vital role in protecting lives and property in their local communities, and selflessly render assistance to those in need, and whereas these volunteers contribute to the well-being of others by giving tirelessly their energy, time, and energy without desire for recognition or personal gain, and whereas the citizens of Carter County are extremely fortunate to be able to rely upon these serving and the volunteer fire departments throughout the county for assistance in their time of need, especially for those who seek nothing in retirement, and whereas the Carter County Commission of Tennessee feels that the proper to honor these volunteers and provide them with such deserved recognition for the invaluable service they provide to citizens of Carter County. Now therefore be it resolved by the County Commission of Carter County, Tennessee, meaning in a regular session on this the sixteenth day of June two thousand and fourteen, with lawful form of state commission being present, majority voting affirmative, that the commission hereby adopts this resolution recognizing and honoring exceptional and selfless efforts of the men and women serving volunteer firefighters in various departments throughout Carter County.
I make the motion.
I make the motion.
Motion to accept by Ms. Brown, seconded by Mr. Lewis. Any discussion? Mr. Lewis?
I do my best to keep up in my department in my district, there are ample back forty, and what we don't feel out of this is being fervent that all volunteers, and it's a particular that not, and I wish the county to do more on when I'm over there, but I personally demand to be grateful.
Mr. Lewis. Mr. Vaughn, Karen? Mr. Vaughn, Karen?
Realizing that this is a resolution concerning the fire department, for the volunteer fire department, but reading from the first, volunteerism is a basic ingredient, the foundation of this country, very true, for example, while everyone may not know that humanity in this community is responsible for about two million dollars in homes, small homes, granted, but there are homes that are a tax base that we didn't have before, small lots. Also, in this community, Elizabethan Carter County Community Foundation has given away now for four years over thirty thousand dollars. The scholarship sponsored in the name of Charlie Bayless and his wife, I don't know the thousands of dollars at this point, but it's near, what, twenty years, fifteen years, but all this is volunteerism, those who serve on boards, commissions, are to be recognized because volunteerism is a part of this country.
Vaughn, Karen, Mr. Jay.
Mr. Brown, I'm just going to throw this out, seventy-eight percent of the firemen in the United States are volunteer firemen. I don't know how many people knows that, but that's the number, seventy-eight percent are volunteer firemen, and we owe these people a great, a great deal of honor for what they did.
Mr. Campbell, would you wish to say something?
Yes, sir, I'm just representing Storm Creek, I'd like to say that we have one of the best fire departments around, they do a great job, they put their lives on the line every time they go into a fire, and I've seen them plenty of times, go into apartment buildings and things, and they do a fantastic job, and he's our friend.
Mr. Drew.
Mr. Chairman, is anybody here from a fire department?
There are.
I would like for them to stand up at this time.
Well, let's wait till we vote, we'll recognize every one of them, okay? Any other? Mr. God.
Well, I know that these volunteer firemen put in plenty of hours for the trial, and they are devoted people, and I appreciate each and every one of them, bottom of my heart, and I want them to know that if things get bad, they're always right.
Ms. Brown.
I'd just like to thank each and every one of them for all they do, we appreciate them a lot.
I'll vote.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Art Todd.
Anthony Brand.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Cribbitt.
Aye.
Harry Sees.
Aye.
Charles Buckcannon.
Aye.
Elsie Testor.
Aye.
Stephen Ratz.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Coler.
Aye.
Russell Kye.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Cat Ead.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
Cat Ead.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All ayes, motion carries. Now, let's back up, Mr. Herr, and Representative Williams, would you like to say something?
Yeah, how long do I have? I'm, are you done? Two. Now, I, I'm just humbled to be here and for this body to pass a resolution, it's been eight, eight hard years, worked extremely hard for citizens of Carter County, I was really humbled when the hundred and eighth general assembly passed a resolution honoring me for my service in the House of Representatives and as speaker, passed on a unanimous vote in the House and the Senate, and I know a lot of people think I don't have any friends in Nashville, but the House resolution was sponsored by the two leading Republicans in the House, in the Senate, the two leading Democrats in the Senate, and signed by Lieutenant Governor Ramsey, Speaker Beth Hardwell, and Governor Hassan, and I'm extremely proud for my service in the House of Representatives and as Speaker, passed on a unanimous vote in the House and the Senate. And I know a lot of people think I don't have any friends in Nashville, but the House resolution was sponsored by the two leading Republicans in the House, in the Senate, the two leading Democrats in the Senate. And signed by Lieutenant Governor Ramsey, Speaker Beth Hardwell, and Governor Hassan. And I'm extremely proud of that, that my colleagues would honor me. But being honored by these colleagues that represent me, represent my family, and represent the same citizens that I represent, that touches on, it really does. And I really appreciate, I appreciate the eight years and there's been other members here before, some of you that I've worked with. But especially, and I'm gonna mention a couple of names, I probably should, but just small projects that we worked together on. John Snyder, he can tell you, left turn lane in Hampton, left turn lane up in Elk Mills, Mr. Chambers back here, that we worked on safety issues in Rome Mountain. And there's more, but I'm not gonna go into all of them. And, well, Mr. Low Rance, that we did that guardrail project together. And we just got a small project approved, working with Commissioner Cott over at the, over at the Goff course. And if anybody wants to know more about that, he can tell you about it. I'm humbled, it's been eight long years, but it's time for me to stay home, spend a little more time with my family and my friends, sleep in my own bed every night. And I'm proud of what we've accomplished in this community together. I'm proud of my family for standing beside me, my friends who have stood beside me and helped me through some really hard times. And I thank you all so very much. I'm sorry that I couldn't please everybody on this commission, but I, I gave it my all, I gave it my best, and I'm still giving it my all and my best, 'cause I got a few months left. And if you need me, you know how to get ahold of me. I'm still working for the citizens of Carter County and Unicoy right now. Thank you all so much, I'm really humbled by this. Thank you.
Our other resolution honoring these all volunteers, but especially the volunteer fire departments. There are seven volunteer fire departments in Carter County, which are Central Volunteer Fire Department, Elk Mills Volunteer Fire Department, Hampton Valley Forge Volunteer Fire Department, Royal Mountain Volunteer Fire Department, Stomper Creek Fire Department, Watalla Volunteer Fire Department, and the Westford County Volunteer Fire Department. Now, with those members of any of those organizations, please come up. Come right on up. Come right on up here. Come right on up here. I will take this opportunity to shake each one of y'all's hands.
Did you shake mine?
For y'all. That might be on purpose. But I think y'all did an excellent job, and everybody is in each organization, in the whole organization, all over Carter County. Not many people know this, and probably not many people want me to tell, but I actually started out with Elizabeth City Fire Department for a short time, before I got crazy enough to the police department. But I should appreciate y'all, and I know we all do too. Now I have the mayor's report.
Mr. Chairman, Mayor Haskins.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the committee reports. The committee.
The committee made a note and we have a list of things that can be passed on to you that were approved by the committee and recommended and approved by this body. The first item is a listing of donations for the animal shelters. That amount this time, this month, comes to seven hundred and ten dollars fifty-nine cents. I make the motion that we approve putting that into their budget.
Herr. I have a motion by Mr. Sissick, second by Mr. Brown, to approve this. Any discussion? Oliver, please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Art Todd. Nancy Brandt.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Eric Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
Aye.
Steve Lorant.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joyne Lincoln-Chip.
Aye.
Charlie Davis. Bobby Deeds.
Aye.
Ian Arnie.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Koller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Heed.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries.
Next item, I make the motion that we transfer remaining funds of the Chancery Corps thirteen, fourteen budget to reserve accounts for the purchase of system hardware.
Motion by Mr. Sissick, second by Ms. Keller, to transfer these funds. Any discussion? Oliver, please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Art Todd. Nancy Brandt.
Aye.
Joel Street. Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Eric Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
Aye.
Steve Lorant.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joyne Lincoln-Chip.
Aye.
Charlie Davis.
Aye.
Bobby Deeds.
Aye.
Ian Arnie.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Koller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Heed.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, next item. I make the motion to allow the utilization of the grant matching fund for the cost of repairing the radio towers for the volunteer fire departments. They were damaged this past winter by the severe weather. They need to be repaired.
Oliver. Motion by Mr. Sissick, second by Mr. Lewis, to reallocate those funds for volunteer fire departments. Any discussion? Oliver, please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Art Todd. Nancy Brandt.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Eric Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
Aye.
Steve Lorant.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Aye.
Charlie Davis.
Aye.
Bobby Deeds.
Aye.
Ian Arnie.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Koller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Heed.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
All eyes, motion carries.
Okay, next item concerning the clerk's office. The state previously had planned the materials for the cost of processing titles. Now they send money to her, to that office. So I make a motion to approve a reserve for any unused state funds for title processing for the county court clerk's office.
The motion for Mr. Sissick, second by Mr. Brown, to approve this reserve. Any discussion? Oliver, please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Art Todd.
Nancy Brandt. Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Eric Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
Aye.
Steve Lorant.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joyne Lincoln-Chip.
Aye.
Charlie Davis.
Aye.
Bobby Deeds.
Aye.
Ian Arnie.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Koller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Heed.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
All eyes, motion carries.
I make the motion to approve General Fund One-O-One Amendment Number Eight, twenty-six items, a total of two hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-two dollars, zero coming from fund balance.
Second.
I have the motion from Mr. Sissick, second by Ms. Brown, to approve General Fund One-O-One, Amendment Number Eight. Any discussion? Oliver, please.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Nancy Brandt.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Eric Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
Aye.
Steve Lorant.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joyne Lincoln-Chip.
Aye.
Charlie Davis. Bobby Deeds.
Aye.
Ian Arnie.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Koller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Here. Aye.
Pat Heed.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries.
Next, I make the motion to approve the Solid Waste Fund One-Sixteen Amendment Number One, has four items, a total of three thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, zero coming from fund balance.
Motion by Mr. Sissick, second by Mr. Cott. Any discussion? Oliver, please.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Art Todd. Nancy Brandt.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Eric Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
Aye.
Steve Lorant.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joyne Lincoln-Chip.
Aye.
Charlie Davis. Bobby Deeds.
Aye.
Ian Arnie.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Koller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Heed.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All eyes.
All eyes, motion carries.
I make the motion to approve Health Department Fund One-Sixteen Amendment Number Two, three items, total of three hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and sixty-nine dollars, thirty-four cents, zero coming from fund balance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sissick, second by Ms. Keller, to approve the Health Department Budget Item Amendment Number Two. Any discussion?
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Nancy Brandt.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Eric Sis.
Aye.
Charles Van Cannon.
Aye.
Elsie Tester.
Aye.
Steve Lorant.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joyne Lincoln-Chip.
Aye.
Charlie Davis.
Aye.
Bobby Deeds.
Aye.
Ian Arnie.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Koller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Pat Heed.
Aye.
And Robert Goff.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carries.
I make a motion to approve Director Trolle Fund One-Twenty-Two Amendment Number One, one, has one item, a total of six hundred and fifty dollars, zero coming from fund balance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Ms. Keller to approve Director Fund amendment number one. Any discussion? All will open.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Montana.
Aye.
Elsie Kestner.
Aye.
Steve Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Lincoln-Chief.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Bobby D.
Aye.
Ken Arney.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Feller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Patty Heed.
Aye.
Robert Gollum.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried.
The committee recommends, and I make a motion to approve Highway Fund one thirty-one amendment number four, seven items, two hundred and thirty thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars, zero coming from fund balance.
Second.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Ms. Keller to approve Highway Fund one thirty-one amendment number four. Any discussion? Ms. Lewis, Ms. Lewis.
How much money did you ask him, what was the question? Can we just give them a maybe a five percent bonus to give them a rate?
I can tell you that's what Mr. Perkins requested, it was a five percent raise.
I know that wouldn't be critical, but you know, if you come down to next year and we have, they have a lot of old time pay, the money might not be in there to cover the next year's rate. So I think that ain't here, we're going to be shifting the balance.
That's just what Mr. Perkins recommended for me to put in the amendment, that's what I wanted.
What do you recommend, Mr. Perkins? I can give them either a bonus and a rate.
If you did a bonus, it would be a one-time payment. If you did a raise, it goes on their salary.
Can I make a motion, Mr. Barr?
There's a motion on the floor right now.
Mr. Lewis, there is enough money in his budget to do this without taking any of the fund balance, right?
For this year, yeah.
For this year.
Mm-hmm, there'd be approximately three and a half payrolls it would cover.
Mr. Chairman.
Do you have it?
Mr. Lewis wanted to make an amendment to the motion, I think that might be an order.
You're making amendments, Ms. Lewis?
Yes, sir, I made an amendment that give them a five percent bonus instead of a five percent rate. And then next year, if you, you know, we've got any money left, we can maybe proceed with one and one seven, but still a bonus and a rate. I make that to make the motion.
Question, Mr. Barr. Mr. Lewis, how much money has he got in his budget right now? Eight hundred and some thousand?
What do you mean, as far as what he has in his budget?
In Highway Department budget.
Are you talking about how much have we budgeted for him, or are you talking about how much he has left? Well, if you look at your reports that I give you every month, at the end of May, there's eight hundred and sixty-three thousand at the end of May. However, he still has June payrolls to go, and he has all the monthly expenditures that go with that. With that being said, there are hefty expenditures for asphalt coming out because he has to do state aid projects that he's doing, and that is reimbursed by the state seventy-five percent. However, he has to take that out of his budget.
How much, how much would this five percent raise be? Forgive me, all of you, do you have an idea?
Well, we moved twenty-five hundred and fifty dollars to cover it, so that was above and beyond what was in the line items. That was for the three pay periods that it was requested for.
Mr. Hicks.
Mr. Lewis, if this payment increase is approved, would it require additional tax levy for the road department to continue that for a full fiscal year next year?
Mr. Perkins has informed me that we will operate under the same budget next year that we did this year, we'll just have to reallocate within the lines. And there will be some lines that do not have sufficient funding, and we'll have to move from others who have additional funding. So as far as a tax levy, no, it will not require a tax levy, according to Mr. Perkins.
I know he turned a lot of money back in last year, so I don't think probably.
Chairman, you have a proposed amendment?
Question of the motion.
You have a proposed amendment, Steve, since it was a second, you just accepted it as friendly.
Mr. Sisk, you accept this motion to amend?
Amendment, yes.
Do you say it?
Yes. Who was this second on?
Ms. Keller.
Ms. Keller, do you accept that amendment? Sorry, you need to ask, she doesn't accept that amendment.
You changed it from a five percent raise to a five percent bonus?
Yes.
After the discussion in the budget committee, I understood that this was money that should have been used this year for old time. So I'd like to go talk to Mr. Perkins and ask for it. I mean, he's got the money, his budget is not going to require any cash now.
No, the only thing about it is, what are we going to do next year when they have received the five percent raise, that will give me an effect. In other words, we're going to have to increase his budget and cover it again.
Well, I thought Mr. Lewis just said it wouldn't cause it increase, it just could get to change the line items.
Just for one year, next year, that's a good thing.
Mr. Lewis, can you address that, please?
I'm sorry, I was discussing something.
Would this increase his budget next year, or is this going to change in line items?
Like I just answered Mr. Hicks's question, Mr. Perkins informed me we will be operating under the same budget as last year, thirteen fourteen, so we will have to move within line items, but it will not require additional funding from the county.
That's my understanding.
I don't believe we have given a five percent raise to anybody in the last two or three years, have we?
No, sir.
If anybody runs a life-saving cure.
I'll just add an amendment.
So we have an amendment, and say we do that amendment to change this to a one-time five percent bonus for the highway department. Is that right?
What will that, what will that come back to, or what will that, what will that mean for employees?
It'll be different per employee, and...
Five percent?
And that...
Whatever they're...
Well, I know, I need, I need to know. Everybody will be different, it's important what they want, right?
Yeah, I'm right. Most of them will be different.
So I make a hundred, you make two hundred, you're getting more than I'm getting.
So...
You want to do it?
So people coming through, and we can't get out to work in the wintertime, or we're out when we're snowing, and everything has to be cleaned, so we can get out. We're going to give them, we're going to give them this year, but next year, you know, I, you know, I think it was pretty clear in the budget, they know that what we required, what the budget committee recommended.
Ms. Keller.
I think Mr. Lewis wants to give an explanation about something.
I'm not sure that we can change Mr. Perkins's request, he is the elected official. He did request a five percent raise. What you can do is you can not approve that line item on that amendment, but I don't think you can tell him that he has to give a five percent bonus, or he has to give a five percent raise. That's his duty as the elected official.
Ms. Brown.
Jack, don't come and ask for anything very often. It's been a long time, and I've done some research on this, and I honestly think they deserved it. And I voted against it the other night, but I've done some research, and I think that deserved the five percent.
Mr. Trump.
Mr. Chairman, you just approved the bench of Lice Feet, and the employees at Solid Waste got employee bonus budget from the general fund of twenty-one thousand dollars.
No, sir.
That's in Lice's budget.
That's not accurate.
Well, how come it isn't here?
I have no idea what you're talking about, but...
Let me show you where's that.
In the meantime, Ms. Keller.
It's in order, I'll send my statement to that secretary.
It'll be in order.
It's on page four point, if Mr. Lewis...
Four point?
Lice's budget.
Okay, that was in two thousand and eleven, and it's not twenty-one thousand dollars, it's two thousand one hundred and sixty-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents. And you are correct, that is in the cash flow analysis for Solid Fund, Solid Waste Fund.
But you say it comes from the general fund?
It did come from the general fund, and that was in January of two thousand and
I've got to use Lice's budget.
Because that's an attachment that was included for the cash flow analysis for the Solid Waste Fund. Last month, you approved the finale of the transfer for the Solid Waste Fund, and that's just my detail showing you what you had used in the past.
The other question, the original motion.
That's what I do if Mr. Lewis withdraw his amendment, because Mr. Perkins is not here to tell us what he would want or approve or even ask for. I think we can do is go on about the budget committee approved the other night. Now, Ms. Lewis, do you want to withdraw the motion?
What would be your suggestion, if I don't?
If you do not, we'll vote on that.
Then throw in another motion.
And then we'll entertain another motion. If it doesn't pass.
I don't agree with you.
Right or no?
It was, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Was that not just an amendment that was not accepted by the second? I mean, it's...
It was not accepted as a friendly amendment, so you did...
So that falls off the table, and it goes back to the original motion, is that right, Mr. Turner? Thank you.
You understand that, Ms. Lewis?
I understand.
All right, then we'll go with the original motion.
We'll change the line.
Question on the other.
Please.
Read the motion again.
It's to approve the County Highway Department bonus of five percent.
Raise or lower.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Also having employed part of County, I'll take the initiative to this part of the votes.
Lawrence Todd, Nancy Brown.
I change my vote to yes, because that's my suggestion.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Montana.
Aye.
Elsie Kestner.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Lincoln-Chief.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Bobby D.
Aye.
Ken Arney.
Aye.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
No.
Sonia Feller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
No.
I'm sorry. Patty Heed.
Aye.
Robert Gollum.
All eyes, motion carried.
Next, I make a motion to approve General Purpose School Fund one forty-one amendment number eight, it contains twenty-three items for a total of four hundred and forty-five thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars and eleven cents, zero coming from fund balance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Ms. Keller to approve Cardigan School General Fund one forty-one, amendment number eight. Any discussion? All will open.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell. Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Street.
Because I'm employed part of County, I have called for the winners, the proposal about to be voted, whoever required my argument, I'll vote in general, my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and citizens, this body represents, aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Montana.
Aye.
Elsie Kestner.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Lincoln-Chief.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Bobby D.
Aye.
Ken Arney.
Being employed part of County, this is not a conflict, this is a vote.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Feller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Patty Heed.
Aye.
Robert Gollum.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried.
Okay, next, I make a motion to approve Federal Projects Fund one forty-five amendment number one, one item for a total of nine thousand one hundred dollars, zero coming from fund balance.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Sisk, second by Mr. Chambers to approve Cardigan School, federal project one forty-two, amendment number seven. Any discussion? All will open.
Peter Peters.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Nancy Brown.
Aye.
George Street.
Because I'm employed part of County, I have called for the winners, the proposal about to be voted, whoever required my argument, I'll vote in general, my conscience and my obligation to my constituents and citizens, this body represents, aye.
Richard Winters.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Montana.
Aye.
Elsie Kestner.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Lincoln-Chief.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Bobby D.
Aye.
Ken Arney.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Ronnie Trevitt.
Aye.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Montana.
Aye.
Elsie Kestner.
Aye.
Stephen Ray.
Aye.
Tom Bowers.
Aye.
Joanne Lincoln-Chief.
Aye.
Charlie Baynes.
Aye.
Bobby D.
Aye.
Ken Arney.
Being employed part of County, this is not a conflict, this is a vote.
Steve Chambers.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Sonia Feller.
Aye.
Russell Cott.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Patty Heed.
Aye.
And Robert Gollum.
Aye.
All eyes, motion carried.
Okay, motion to approve Federal Projects Fund one forty-two amendment number seven, one item, total of two hundred and fifty-three dollars, fifty-one cents, zero coming from fund balance.
Motion by Mr. Sis, second by Mr. Chambers to approve car catch good federal project 142, amendment number seven. Any discussion?
Peter P.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Tyler, Nancy Graham.
Aye.
Joel Street.
As I am employed part of county having conflict with the government, I will whoever required of my argument. My vote, the vote on answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and citizens this body represents aye.
Richard Wynn.
Aye.
Ronnie Privet.
Aye.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Montana.
Aye.
Elsie Kessler.
Aye.
Steve Lorraine.
Aye.
Paul Mauer. Joan Langton Sheer.
Aye.
Charlie Davis.
Aye.
Bobby D.
Aye.
Ian Orney.
Being an employee of the Department of State who has been having conflict with the government.
Steve Chandler.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Scott Stone.
Aye.
Russell Pat.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
All last one to carry.
Next item was a memorandum of understanding presented to the school board by the sheriff's department. Chief Street, would you respond to that please?
Thank you, Mr. Street. The proposal that's in front of me now is this year the school system has offered to join in for anything I leave out. To improve the security in the schools, there was a grand deal with the school system. Through working with the school system, that is going to be accomplished by adding seven additional school resource officers in your schools throughout the county. We have been in that process all year in trying to get more officers in the school and hiring officers to get them through the training process. Any school board approval, this Thursday I believe it is. There should be an amount of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars transferred to the sheriff's office to complete this program, buy the car and the rest of the equipment. I guess what we're asking you to do is allow us to accept that money and put it in the reserve account. So after June the 30th or July the 1st, we can pick up and continue this program and get those officers in the school by the beginning of school year this year. That will bring us up to thirteen school resource officers in our schools in the county.
Yeah, evaluate, evaluate attorney chief.
We are in the process of training some, we have three that we already have trained in the schools this year to supplement it and the other four have been hired and are going through the basic academy and their FTO training. And there's something you have to understand that if we, we just can't pull a grower out, pull an officer out, if we hire one today, the best we can do is six months out before we can put that officer on the street. But we should, we're trying to get ready to have all of them in place by the school, start the school year this year. So I'd ask you to let us accept that money, put it in the reserve account so we can finish this program and keep it on track.
Dr. Ford, uh, this is Ford, voting on this.
Yeah. Yeah, the work truck was sent in and presented that to you straight and it's just a matter of going forward. Go around Thursday.
Thursday. Chairman. Do we need to wait until the board votes or?
I think we can vote pending on the board's passing of this. Is that not right?
I might.
Second, second.
Another motion by Mr. Sis, second by Mr. Chambers to approve second of this grant money pending the approval of the card gang school board. Any discussion?
We actually need to approve putting that money in a reserve so they can purchase the equipment that they need to get those people going. I think that's what you're gonna do with it, right?
Yeah, right.
So the reserve is what we need to do. You've already accepted the money from the school system, did that back at the first of the year. We're just now getting our ducks in a row so where we can get the amount.
Place it in reserve.
Mm-hmm.
Any other discussion? Hello.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Lawrence Tyler, Nancy Graham.
Aye.
Joel Street. Richard Wynn.
Aye.
Ronnie Privet.
Aye.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Montana.
Aye.
Elsie Kessler.
Well, I am employed part of county having conflict with the government, I will whoever required of my argument. My vote, the vote on answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and citizens this body represents aye.
Steve Lorraine.
Aye.
Paul Mauer.
Aye.
Joan Langton Sheer.
Aye.
Charlie Davis.
Aye.
Bobby D.
Aye.
Ian Orney.
Aye.
Steve Chandler.
Aye.
John Lewis.
Aye.
Scott Stone.
Aye.
Russell Pat.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye. Aye.
All last one to carry. All right. Final question, ma'am.
We don't need you to leave, but we don't tonight is Andrew Deloche's evaluation was a very positive one. In fact, it was an excellent evaluation of someone in her position. Uh, so tonight I put in the form of a motion that we give her a yearly, uh, two hundred, uh, two thousand five hundred dollar salary increase. So I put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
Now, a motion by Ms. Blake Sheep, second by Mr. Sis, to approve the finance directors for twenty-five hundred dollar annual wage. Any discussion? Mr. Lewis.
Miss Blake, she wanted money to come in.
It's in her budget.
In her budget?
Yeah, she, she is directed to make sure that her budget includes this on a yearly basis.
What happened if it was late, it runs out of money?
I don't know.
You're a bad dear.
Mr. Street.
I just want to kind of general fund it, but go short or there's all kind of factor to mention with it.
This big budget. Any other discussion?
Question on, uh, I will.
Peter P.
Aye.
Willie Campbell.
Aye.
Nancy Graham.
No.
Joel Street.
Aye.
Richard Wynn.
Aye.
Ronnie Privet.
Aye.
Mary Sees.
Aye.
Charles Montana.
Aye.
Elsie Kessler.
Aye.
Steve Lorraine.
Aye.
Paul Mauer.
Aye.
Joan Langton.
Aye.
Charlie Davis.
Aye.
Bobby D.
Aye.
Ian Orney. Ian Orney.
Aye.
Steve Chandler.
Aye.
John Lewis.
No.
Scott Stone.
Aye.
Russell Pat.
Aye.
Scott Sands.
Aye.
Bill Armstrong.
Aye.
Kathy.
Aye.
Robert Goff.
Aye.
Forty-one hours, motion carry. Thank you, Ms. Blake Sheep.
I would like to say that Mr. Deloche does a wonderful job and I would grab him a load for her race.
I think we are. Um, at this time, we'll take a five minute recess. All right, we'll get back to order, please. Uh, well, this resume our committee reports. Highway committee.
Uh, I have one thing, Mr. Chairman. As you know, probably from the news, we've had a ongoing problem out of the coach ship. Uh, last week we took the public media out there. And the past week we've put a, Shannon's here. We've put a, there's a situation out there where there's a dangerous curve. There's a young school girl gets off, coming out the dust in that curve. It's sort of a blind curve. I went to Mr. Nave and Scoop us. And he put up a, with the highway department, a sign saying Scoop us stop ahead. We have since then put up other signs saying dangerous curve ahead. We went out there last week and took the committee and the committee voted lower the speed limit in that section of road from thirty-five, which is county wide, to twenty mile an hour in that short section of road on Coche Road. I have a petition from the people in that area requesting a twenty mile an hour speed limit. We have tried to address the situation, but it is a dangerous thing. We don't want a child hurt in the county. So we're requesting that the committee has approved this, that we change that speed limit from thirty-five to twenty mile an hour. And it's in the area of five twelve Coche Road.
I'll take it.
I have a motion for Mr. Peters, second by Mr. Lewis, to lower the speed limit on Coche Road from thirty-five to twenty miles an hour. Any discussion?
We won't look faster than, or, or a sign, we won't believe that, or about. That, that is a problem, probably, probably. Talk to you, I'm thinking it's back. I mean, on the other side of her too. We're kind of, yeah, right. It's not her, it doesn't matter about. If you're all room, it starts small there. Man, I don't know how to do that. Maybe that's, that's more of a. Yeah, we, it's just in that, that curvy section, I don't think. What in terms of day is that, is the control of, is our, is our. Well, we got the, we've, last night we put the signs up and, and we've asked that the sheriff department control that a little more, especially here in the school, when the buses are running maybe a little more in the afternoon. Uh, cause it is, and we also requested that one of the neighbors would try and get permission from him to cut some brush out so we'll open it up a little bit if he can see there. We're doing that too, so.
Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Although, who cares? Uh, Landville committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Um, I stand for you tonight to, uh, just give you a little bit more knowledge about our ongoing, uh, at the Landville. I'm sure by this point in time, everyone's aware of the roll-off truck that we've had so much problem with. Excuse me. And Mr. Lyons has done some more research, uh, subject to several members of the Landville committee and budget committee, asking him to, uh, see if he could find better deals on trucks. And I just want to pass that along knowing the budget committee has a meeting tomorrow night. I did ask Mr. Lyons for this report. I wanted to know how much money he had spent, uh, on the current truck this past fiscal year. And for the fiscal year in just repairs, we spent fourteen thousand and thirty-four dollars. Uh, this is one piece of equipment that we have. It's the only piece right now where you are currently borrowing from another county. The problem originally is our, our truck is a hook, a hook lift truck. It doesn't fit all of the, the larger box containers, uh, that's, that's out there on the market. Uh, Mr. Lyons didn't think that he could get some of our boxes redone to go with trucks that were, were much more available. But he has since found out that he can get those done at a cost of about, probably around four thousand dollars. And that would get all of our boxes, they're totaled about fifteen to seventeen. He didn't have that number right for them. That will accept trucks that are much more available. And he was able to find, I will give this to Ms. Deloche. I, I didn't, uh, have time to make copies for everyone. Uh, he's found a couple of new trucks. One new truck, and this would be, um, a cable truck. Uh, it's got a price on it. It's a two thousand thirteen Mack, model UU eight thirteen. It's got a price of a hundred forty thousand, a hundred forty-five thousand dollars. Actual price is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. A two thousand fourteen, uh, once again, cable truck, uh, brand new, both of these would have warranties, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. If you add a automatic transmission to that, that would be a hundred, uh, fifteen thousand additional dollars. So, uh, I think he made you aware, last budget meeting, he has found some used vehicles. Um, two thousand ten Mack, a hundred twenty-six thousand, and oh five Kenworth, fifty-five thousand. Uh, fifty-five, another one, just the list goes on, but they range from the lowest used trucks, uh, from fifty-five thousand up to a hundred twenty-six thousand. So this is something our oper, operation desperately needs. And I ask you to, uh, take a great deal of consideration in making this decision. And I will pass this to Ms. Deloche, she'll shoot out, uh, for tomorrow night. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chief. Uh, rules of balance.
No problem. Everything's smooth.
Yeah, for fair. Uh, Billy and Grant. Uh, have I missed any other?
Billy and Grant, Elsie had to leave right away.
Okay. Uh, any other committee that I've missed?
Long and course, no, no report at this moment, not a chance.
Thank you, no bigger. Uh, they will have a county attorney report.
Uh, several issues. Firework, responsible sensitive, Elizabeth's interest request that Commissioner Lewis have not received response, actually at this point, as to the possibility of a joint firework resolution. SIE, you know, NCI Road, which is an ongoing project. All documents have now been overnighted to the lien holder, or the in-house counsel lien holder, which should allow them to potentially get a release of the deed of trust, which is holding up the project. If that happens, and they've agreed then to donate the property, then that project moves forward. I spoke with the T-Dot representatives, and we will wait and finish our work on the other two projects, as he does feel positive this one other aspect. Third, uh, company that has the deed of trust against their property should have a partial release and allow us to move forward. We had a drainage issue that we had to examine in Daners subdivision. This is something we examined with, uh, correspondence. I think Mayor Humphrey and I visited one time and then spoke with the road department. We went back and did some research deeper into the actual layout of the flats of the subdivision itself and to the phases of the subdivision. And with the flats as they lie and the easements as they lie, there's not a lot of relief the county can give. However, we have sent a correspondence out to the, to the citizens that, that lie along this small easement and brought the idea that if we can enlarge that easement somewhat, then make room for the county to actually want to potentially fix this problem. And that's something that the new road department most likely inherit. But we are making progress and, and also keeping the citizen involved in trying to fix this farm. Uh, advanced two new litter complaints to the planning office for their review. You should have any day for this. It's something they brought up and then they've handled all proper notice to get those filed before Sessions Court, to get a court order, clean those properties. And we have a third one, I think, that's getting over down the Pike over in West Carter on a lot that, uh, so family from Knoxville, they've just, they've just left the phone and the law filing disrepair. Uh, this discovery is ongoing in the Tennessee tavern case. Our attorneys in that matter completed depositions. There'll be a few more taken before they can trial. That case is moving forward. I completed unemployment or unemployment research this month on behalf of the sheriff's department, uh, also on behalf of, uh, behalf of a couple of other departments. We have identified a couple of extra parcels, not extra, but about two to three parcels for the next excess property sale. Something started about a year ago when I sold excess property off, the county had to get it back on the tax roll as well as to, uh, receive the bounty from the sale back to the general fund. And finally, on a piece of really good news, a lawsuit that was pending against the county itself, generated through the jail and sheriff's department, was dismissed by Judge, federal Judge Ronnie Greer this last couple of weeks ago. And one of our pieces of litigation has been resolved, available to the county with no monetary damages owed to the county and the carrier picked up the attorney's fees. So we come out of that one really, really well. And, uh, one last thing, I've got Ms. Bree Blay was up here with me tonight, and, uh, I've taken on three. Typically each year, I take on a couple of college students. Got a couple in from UT this year and one from, one from ETSU. And, uh, Bree's been working a little bit and I wondered, I'll come to a commission meeting and see how county government operates. And then I'm taking another one with me to Washington County next week, and then I'll have another gentleman here next month. And I just think it's important we let some of our young and brightest come back and, and see how the process works. I'm very proud she's in my office and she's an extremely intelligent young lady. Glad she's with me.
Thank you, Ms. Blay. Do you have any commissioner comments?
Yes, sir.
First, let me say, it's quite a pleasure. It's been the last four years working with all of you. Some of you I knew before I came on to commission, some of you I didn't. Uh, but I consider I let me friends. And I can honestly say that, that all twenty-four people, including myself, I think we come in with these meetings voting for what's best for the county, for our families, for our children, and do the best that we can do to make this county a better place to live. And I appreciate each and every one of you. Let me say that. Some of you I didn't know. Mr. Byers, I didn't know Mr. Byers when I came on here. I, we played Little League years ago together, but I, but I, I consider him quite a close friend now. Mr. Byers, the attorney. Uh, I, I lived, I, I really have enjoyed working with him. What I'm coming to you tonight is a problem that we've got in the sixth district in the Valley Forge area. And I'm coming to you, uh, I want to apologize. I wanted to get to the highway committee meeting last month, the last highway committee meeting, but I just got back on vacation. I had a doctor's appointment. I couldn't make it, but, uh, we have a problem, uh, in Valley Forge. And I think Mr. Lawrence can, can relate to this. Uh, for your turn, when you, we, when you're coming up, I guess from Treadway Street up to the Zion Road. Uh, we have schools, we have churches, especially our, that Valley Forge Freewill, uh, that it's hard to get out. And it's hard to get out of these, the streets, even the side streets. If you're coming, if you're coming from a Zion Road, you're wanting to go toward Hampton, or if you're coming, or if you're coming on the Hayward Tire side and you want to go down, it takes a considerable amount of time to get out on the road there. And you're taking a chance every time you enter the truck right there. Mr. Lawrence drives a Scoobus, he's about, that sometimes he has to sit there for a long period of time to get out on the road to go to Hampton and Valley Forge. Uh, I think it's, it's, uh, kind of sad that we have traffic signals on every end of town. And the last one you get, you have one a less than a fourth of a mile up here going to east side. And that's the last traffic signal you see in New York, North Carolina. Our county has grown and, and we have businesses that's opened up. Uh, we have, the problem at Valley Forge is we have a lot of people that live on the Zion Road and live only in the, I guess you could call Garrison Hollis side. And those people, uh, instead of trying to get out on the highway, going up, they'll go, they have to go, some of them will go under the bridge and go on that winding two lane river bottom road up of the Mill Pond or up of the old log church and then try to get on the highway. Uh, if you're coming out where I live, uh, in the vicinity there at Hayward Tire, and you're wanting to go down, especially during summer nights, it's, it's terrible. And in the afternoons when, when the work's ready. Uh, it's a safety issue. I've had two friends that were killed leaving church. At the Freewill Church, it got hit right there, coming out of that, out of that, right, right there in front of, uh, church. We've had a lot of accidents. We have different parts of that highway that's not marked right. I would like to ask this commission if they could request a study. Have the state come up and look at, at the situation that we have up there. Uh, before we have any more accidents. And we're taking a chance every time this Scoobus is entering the highway up there. Uh, I'm just afraid if we're gonna, if we don't do something, we're gonna have a serious accident up there. Uh, and I'll, if there's anything else, you want to, Mr. Gray?
Mr. Ballers, may I address?
Yeah, absolutely.
Uh, Mr. Chambers, we, we had some success on, on this road with, uh, nineteen eighty, Representative Williams, uh, that was here later, earlier, the second.
Is Mr. Williams still here?
Um, he requested, I know, working with him on highway nineteen eighty, a, a study to be done. And when I came on board this commission, one of my first projects was on the Simmer Creek curves. And, uh, I'll never forget, I took it to the highway committee and G. Richard, uh, God rest his soul, uh, was the one that, uh, told me what we needed to do. My highway committee voted on it. Uh, full commission passed it and we asked Mr. Ballers to write a letter, which he done. And they done a spot safety check. Now we have great signage up there. Um, and also, Mr. Lewis made, made the recommendation, the same letter, uh, Mr. Ballers wrote concerning the, uh, three twenty-one. That's been approved for a red light in Hampton there at the Road Runner. I noticed today coming down oddly enough, uh, I asked for caution lights to be put at Hampton High School. And there was a caution light at Hampton High School up as I came to commission today. So I would just suggest that we just follow that same process, work with Representative Williams, uh, and everyone and ask them to do a study on this section. I, I mean, it's common sense, as large a church as Valley Forge and it is, Valley Forge Freewill and Zion Elementary, that this probably should have been done a long time ago. And, uh, I think that's a portion that we need to follow.
I'm not a, I'm not an expert on highways, but, you know, a, a ramp underneath the bridge that would come up, that would come up and go up toward Hampton would, would be a, a solution to that. But I, but you know. But I, but you know, that is something for the state to do. And I would like to request that if we can possibly do that, that be done. I, uh, I'm not doing this, I, I'm going out of office, and I, I want to, I'd like to see something done.
I would answer that as well, because I, I, I took the same approach, you know, to, to those problems in my district. Uh, when I talked with, uh, safety engineers, they came up from NASCAR, uh, several members were present at a meeting that I put together, County Mayor was there, and I talked to a lot of those folks. And I, I wanted the whole thing fixed, uh, in its entirety, you know, from that first curve back when you come off the four lane, uh, to pass the Tiger Creek. And they said, uh, they didn't have the money for a project like that, but something that could be done quickly, uh, you know, a study to be done, a spot safety check. Now, if you want something like a ramp or something, you're talking about something that's going to probably take five to ten years. But, uh, we've had this discussion before. I have in other areas of county government, and I, you know, with some drainage problems that I, that I took to county officials. And, you know, I, I said, you know, we need to get maybe federal government involved in this. And I was told that, you know, something like this could take ten years. And I said, well, what if we'd started it ten years ago? So, uh, um, we need something done quick, and then for further studies, you know, it should be followed up. But I would recommend, uh, asking for Mr. Bowers to write the letter, uh, just like we did in the other situations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I appreciate you each and every one of you. Thank you.
Ms. Plankton Schiff.
The Elizabeth Water Department has put out a brochure. I don't know if y'all have received yours or not, but in it, it says that our water has lead in it and that we need to run our water for at least two minutes before we drink it. So, uh, you know, with the water rates going up now, uh, you know, I don't know how much that would equate to each time you wanted to get a drink of water to run the water for two minutes. Uh, we went up to the ribbon cutting thing at the Wataga River Regional Authority, and no one up there mentioned anything about there being lead in the water.
Thank you, Ms. Plankton Schiff. Any other comments? Mr. Von Can.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, things have happened in the last bit. I think the thing that's going to have a great of an impact on us is the two percent, is the two percent, uh, match on bridges. This should allow five bridges, possibly six, uh, to be, uh, built. To take the politics out of, uh, the bridges, the state already has a prior plan, therefore you can go... politics, uh, therefore, uh, they, they knew, knew where the worst bridges were, and, uh, and that's been done thanks to Shannon Burge, Mr. Powell, the mayor, Adam Wallen of the state. Those people had an important input on the, uh, Highway Committee, the superintendent. But this will make a big impact, because no bridges have been done, other than washouts, since this man here proposed six bridges in nineteen June of nineteen eighty-two. That's what the Vanses meeting said. Not that I've got plenty of time to do that, but I did look at that. The, uh, dog issue. One of our members would have it, have us believe that the mayor created all the dog problems. I don't believe that that's a fair assessment. The, uh, the way you keep a dog from barking is take your spray and neuter money and have their vocal cords set down. What else are you going to do? Take the dome from East Tennessee State University, send it over to the, send it over to the dog farm? Dogs are going to bark. That's their nature. Cats will, yeah. But to have us to believe that the mayor is running off of business because of the good work of the animal showers people, and it took years to get to where we are now. If you want to blame somebody, blame the woman that brought in twelve pups. Twelve. I don't know what she thought was funny about seeing dogs breed, but she brought them in about twice a year. So, I don't know who's responsible, but I know one thing, it's not the mayor.
Any other comments? Mr. Von Can.
I don't think that I said it was all the mayor's fault. But when someone goes to his office and he more or less shuts him out the door, then the buck stops there, and right there is the man that stops the buck. He always says that he has open door policy. I go by there many times during the day, a lot of days, and yet if I send that door open. So, Mr. Von Can, you need to get your crannies in the right box. Now, if we want to call a spade a spade, we can call that.
Sir.
And we are running off a lot of small businesses, meat for one.
Your motion, Mr. Chairman.
My motion, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.